Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the City Griffin Board of Commissioners Workshop Meeting, May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. We're gonna have a regards to update on potential and ongoing SPOSS two thousand and sixteen. T-SPOSS, ARPA, and TAD projects. City Manager Jessica O'Connor will address.
Morning.
Good morning.
So it is just about that time to go ahead and provide you an update on all different funds that we have that we are using right now for different projects. I would first like to thank Ms. Eller for putting the majority of this together because I had been deep in budget, so she really sort of helped with that. And if y'all have questions, I'm going to have to defer to her. But first, I want to talk about the active SPOSS projects that we have going on. And the Hammond-Poplar intersection, you'll remember, we are paying for out of SPOSS. And we are currently acquiring Right Away. It's actually was in Becca and Murray last Friday and signed two closing statements. So we had purchased two properties, and then we are designing the utility relocation as well. L's Way, we are also conducting Right Away acquisitions, so we have hired Mr. Seem mainly to do both of those projects. He's working through those now. We do think we have an agreement with the BFW for a little portion of their property that we need. So both of those are proceeding nicely. The Poplar Street Bridge was not a project that we even intended to have to do anytime soon, but since we had some excess SPOSS money, we aren't going to be able to pull it from that. Norfolk Southern is reviewing that now, since it does go over the railroad, and we are awaiting their comments. The golf course, Holbert's, was another thing that we need to have done. And so we are currently working on finalizing that design, and we do have to permit that with the Corps of Engineers. The parking deck repairs, we have received those bids back, and some reason her team are going through them now to see who will be awarded the contract to repair the parking deck. Also, just to let you know, we talked about this before, but I am working through a draft of a notice to the county and their tenants, I guess, in the parking deck currently, that we will not be renewing their lease, and so they will have thirty days to vacate. Those will no longer be reserved spaces. They will be open to the public, so we will be working with some painting and some ways to get up the reserved parking and taking down signs. But we also are going to sign our parking deck a little better, so you understand. We will still reserve this section right here for our customer service, customers rather than those that are going to the courthouse. We're going to try and do a little bit of work to better delineate what you can do in that parking deck, because why do you not believe that it's open to the public? And then lastly, we will be paving the road at the landfill. So they are working on some sanding right now to figure out what that looks like, since it will be a full-depth reclamation, which means it is the first time that it has been paved. A little more work than just going out there and laying some asphalt or concrete over the current dirt. So those are our active SPOSS projects right now. In the future, we hope to be able to strike, relocate State Route one fifty-five. We need to do some paving at the transfer station as well, and then also paving out in Westminster. All of those are somewhat tentative for different reasons. Striping the transfer station in Westminster is more because of our budget. What would we do after the other SPOSS projects that we have? And then also, just based on where we are with storm damage and when we start getting in the first months. Of course, State Route one fifty-five is sort of up to G-DOT at this point. We are waiting to hear back from them, and we've already seen the concept plan that our engineers submitted. We have not heard back from them, but we do expect that one of the comments always is that we have to do a public information meeting. So Brian Upson appears on, is on preparing for that along with Heson and Sawyer, and so we'll look for that. Hopefully, in the near future, because once that is done and our concept plan is approved, it moves up our funding opportunity. Right now, it is twenty thirty-two, and that is not acceptable, and that adds nine more years of trucks coming through here. So hopefully, once that paving, or once that concept plan is approved, we can move that up and get that out of the impound where it needs to be.
Do we have a fund that's been set aside for one fifty-five, like a million dollars?
We do.
A hundred million dollars have set aside?
Yes. All right. Next, our proposed striping list for phase one, you can see the lists are there. Merryweather Street, Crescent Road, Cape Town, Hammond Drive, Tilney Avenue, South Third Street, South Fourth Street, Southside Hill, Northside Hill, and Bean Street. Again, we are suggesting at this point that we let that sort of be a next phase. After we do some paving, and once we get that paving bid back, we do have that out right now, because we don't know what those costs are going to look like and how long it will be until we reimburse from from storm damage. So that is your SPOSS project. Moving into T-SPOSS. We are using our T-SPOSS funds to mill and resurface. We released that bid May seventeenth, and so we are still accepting bids right now. Have a lot of questions, and that bid will it'll be middle of June sometime. And we have proposed two point six nine miles of street to be milled and resurfaced, and this is not just coming in and laying over what's there. It's actually sort of digging down, milling it out, so we keep any curves that we may currently have. And that list is Atavale Street, Allen Street, Windsor Way, East Broad Street, Ridgewood Drive, East Poplar Street, East Wall Street, Rock Street, South Fourteenth Street, and Will Street. So again, everything is somewhat tentative depending on the results of the bid. Construction costs continue to increase. And when we are able to get that reimbursement, but we do believe we will proceed with at least those streets. We also are going to look at sidewalk and pedestrian connectivity, the proposed ones that there's the first one I want to actually address with you all. So let me go through the the next ones first. Madison Road, Wesley Drive, East College Street, Merryweather Street, Carver Road, and Terrace Cell Court. That would all be sidewalk there. Harbor Road is one that I think everybody is one of, it's been on the master plan for years and years. The concern becomes that Spalding County is very new board now. They want to put it out to bid, and they want to know if we want to join in that bid. They did go ahead and have Garagon do the design, and our portion of that construction, based on Garagon's design, is almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that is half of your money that you said that you can spend on sidewalks in which you spot. You put a million dollars in for sidewalks. Marissa believes that a lot of that other can be done in-house. We could potentially do Carver Road in-house, or as no public sidewalk. So we can cut that cost pretty significantly, but timing-wise, we would not be able to do it at the same time as the county. So I need a little bit of direction from you all, and it might not look the same for the same two of our contractors doing it. So I need some direction on probably all of this.
On the sidewalk, there's those kind of activities. How were these particular streets?
We've looked at where sidewalks already were and where they just ended nowhere. And then we are trying to pick those back up and finish them to the edge of the simple mix.
Okay. So.
All right.
My concern is that on this particular list, I see nothing on the north side.
Right, and I think that's sort of to Marissa's point, because there's so much damage of sidewalks there, we want to put that in phase two, so we can not only just repair the damage that is there, but also, because that'll be reimbursed, but also continue them, because there's a lot there that also just stopped nowhere.
Also, on the list, the paving list, I understand that that's my same concern, because I write daily on some streets on north side that are and what I'm thinking is that y'all were fans, right? That are not fit to be striped because of the conditions that there is.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that we're looking at that area.
Yes, we, so we, there's a, if you remember, we did a road assessment. We actually hired somebody to come in and do a road assessment. They drove all of our streets, and so they gave us sort of a score based on condition, based on when they were last paved. We disagreed with some of them, and so Marie put that road every single street as well, and also went through what the outside source said, and then also what we said. And so there are some areas that I think are, need to be paid in every single district, and so every single area of the city, so they are certainly coming. This one, I know Rock, South Fourteenth, Will, Atavale, all of that, we chose to do in the Medical Overlay District, because we have a developer coming in at Collins Street, Raven Street. And so we wanted to go ahead and get all those done, because they'll be doing those when they come down. So we are trying to be very cognizant of what what is the worst out there, so we can get out one and take it.
Say, Richard, on that Carver Road project?
Yes.
I'm going to agree with Marissa. Then we'll try to do as much as we can in-house, and I'm not going to play with more than any here with the county. I would rather us go and do it again. If we save money, that makes
We believe.
I'm sure we, I'm sure our style will match up with what's there beneficial to everybody. That's my end.
If everybody on board with us. The other thing that that could be very good news is that hopefully, no later than the end of June, we will know whether or not we have been awarded what is part of Raze Grant. That was submitted very quickly, because it was found by a citizen sort of late in the game. But Three Rivers Regional Commission, our Economic Development, Public Works, and Paying Development Departments all worked together to submit a grant that would create some connectivity on the north side, which would start the twenty-five million dollar grant. It is for construction, it's for engineering and construction. It is a reimbursable grant, though, so we have to spend the money, and then they pay us back. They will pay us back in phases. We don't have to spend twenty-five million dollars to wait to get twenty-five million dollars back. So we hope to hear back from that no later than June twenty-eighth with the storm. That does actually give us extra points there. So we hope, and are very, and are sort of pre-spooring, it's very favorable, so we hope to have a huge award here soon. Our future T-SPOSS projects that were also approved with our referendum is an intersection improvement at College Cape Town and Hamilton. We want to do the streetscape still between sixth and eighth on Taylor Streets and match what we did with the LCI. State Alley and Bank Street Parking Lot and the Alley Development. And then we agreed that we would resurface approximately three miles toward Orchard Hill. That will go out as a bid with the county, because we'll just give them the money. It was just a flat amount, and then they can resurface whatever it is, and we're working on inter-dominant agreement for them to sign. We agree that that's what we're paying, and there's nothing left to be paid. We're also looking at grants for the preliminary engineering of the College Cape Town-Hamilton intersection. That's what we were able to do with the Hammond-Poplar intersection. And then other projects, we're just having to wait for collections, because we decided not to bond and maybe activate a bond call. So that is where we are on T-SPOSS.
Yes.
We, since Orchard Hill is entitled to a percentage of T-SPOSS, rather than having to argue with them about percentage of the well, they just asked that we would both agree to repay those streets, which is about six miles, and so we'll pay for the county, we'll pay half, which I think was three hundred thousand dollars, and then the county will handle getting that thing. All right, moving on to ARPA. There are a few active projects that we have going right now. We have purchased a generator for the police department building, and that concrete pad has been poured, so we're waiting for it to arrive. Hopefully, early July. That is something that for our CLIA accreditation in other standards, we have to have backup power to this apartment. We also are going to use ARPA money to replace the elevators through this building. Come in here any given week, you may have one, two, or three elevators down. That's because they're almost seventy years old, I think. So finding parts for them is no longer even doable. We're going to have to replace them. And then also, we, the HVAC system in the IT server room somehow was not replaced, and they did the entire building a few years ago, or has not kept up to the demand that we have extended in the server room, because of all the just the technological data that we have. So we are going to have to upgrade that HVAC system. And there was a fifty-week lead time on that back in April, so hopefully by next year, we'll have that completed. The biggest project that y'all have approved within ARPA that is ongoing is the feeder for fiber extension. Because of the storm, there are some delays in getting that fiber, those fiber strands come, because poles were taken down, and so they weren't, they're no longer make-ready. So the electric department and the telecom is working through that. We hope to be running conduit into our data center here by the end of this year, and also start marketing for that availability. And we want to have customers online in early twenty-three, four. That is still moving along, just a little bit postponed. The next thing we want to talk about, that I think we really haven't discussed lately, and this is going to come up in budget. And and ARPA, just one thing about ARPA, too, we did not even put ARPA in the budget this year. It's not a new revenue. What we intend to do is if we decide there's another project that we need to use ARPA from, we'll do a budget at that time. But we don't want to actually specify any more ARPA funds, because we've just sort of been up in pattern that we don't see have going on. But another, another fund that we don't talk about often that does have some money in it that can be used is our TAD one and our TAD two. So if you can tell from the screen, TAD one is a little bit bigger than I think people realize. It goes down to Poplar Street, and then all the way up to Armstead Circle on at least the east side of Hill Street. So there's a lot of different uses that that you can use your TAD money for. A lot of it is in regards to buildings and rehab of buildings, whether it's for business, commercial, industrial, governmental, educational, charitable, charitable or social activity, the expansion of public or private housing. You can also use it for sites that have historical significance. You can use it for open spaces, green spaces, or recreational facilities. You can use it to maintain public art and arts and cultural facilities. You can use it for mass transit. It can be used for telecom infrastructure. It can be used for the improvement of pedestrian access and safety, improving or increasing the value of property. And also, any for the acquisition and retention or acquisition disposition of property for redevelopment. So it's a pretty broad use for TAD. It has to be used within the delineated area. There has to be a redevelopment plan, which requires we do our downtown redevelopment plan. So TAD one is good to go. We have almost five hundred and thirty thousand dollars in TAD one. We have received two hundred and nine thousand dollars for this fiscal year. So property tax values, it seems, were reassessed in downhill, because last year it was only about a hundred and twenty-two. So we do expect at this point that we should receive about two hundred thousand dollars going forward for that TAD project. We don't have anything that we have encumbered that for at this point. In the budget, though, you will see a request for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for TAD for the DDA. They would like to acquire a building, rehab it, and turn around and sell it. A lot of DDAs are doing that. Madison is a place that they have been, have seen that happen there. Mr. Stratton also did this with, he worked for Daniel Virginia, and so he's comfortable with with how that process works. Mr. Ballard and Mr. Wayland are also aware that that is going to be a request to you all. And with the money that had been in that account, we spent a good bit with facade grants and with general assistance grants for our downtown businesses, but we think it's time to do a little bit bigger push and see if we can actually get something out there and get it marketed rehab and put somebody that we want in that building. So you will see that at our budget presentation on the sixth. The other thing is, we have a second TAD.
Can we stop at TAD one first?
Yes.
Is that a larger than I've remembered? But it seems like with the growth, that TAD was created, I think, in oh-nine or oh-ten, possibly. So it seems like where's the checks and balances in regards to the Taxation Center's office, because that that money is city and county appreciation from where the baseline was when it was created, to ensure that we're getting our fair share on it.
We don't get it separated, or when it comes by line, I mean, that's what we get. We're not told how that is determined.
When you did, I did. I did go into evaluation, but I did from cross-checks of the activity. Based on what the considerations were for the department revenue as well. So there are, you know, there's other side sides there, and I think on those side, you know.
Any other questions on that one? So a TAD two, this one, we really have not talked about much. This is, y'all bonded a, well, y'all issued a bond for Kroger and some redevelopment that needed to take place for Kroger to come in. I don't know how it's sixteen, so this is what we call the Kroger TAD. But you can see the boundaries there. It incorporates the commercial cluster east of nineteen forty-one, south of West Taylor, and then west of Hammond. But then only on the parcels fronting the south side of West Taylor are you going to Hammond. Thirteenth Street, it goes pretty much all the way up Thirteenth Street, but does not include some of the residential properties on that side. And then also along Experiment Street to the west of the railroad right of way. And then the boundary along Lover's Lanes with the south edge of the railroad. So it's a very large TAD as well. That TAD has one point nine million dollars in it. However, that TAD is encumbered because of our bond payments, so we have about nine hundred thousand dollars left to pay off our our bonds for Kroger. They were issued in two thousand and eight, I think it was, and they are paid off in two thousand and thirty-eight. So you still have several payments to make, but even in making all those payments, you already are a million dollars over what you'll need to make those payments. So you have some money in that TAD that you can also use for some kind of project. And this is sort of the West Griffin LCI, if you ever heard that update, that was pre-two thousand and sixteen, I don't know, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. It is a little old, but it is still has a really good supplement. So that is something, too, that you can look at for the next few. Any questions there?
A lot of opportunities for us to improve rhythm.
A lot of opportunities, and then also, of course, some sort of, we don't know yet, what, when we'll get back reimbursement. We're still paying bills that are coming in from storm damage. That will continue for a while. And so although we are doing okay right now, we have not had the full fund balance to do that. I am still very cautious at using a bunch of this money for things outside of what is already sort of planned for it to be.
When, when will we know? When will we start with saving money back from?
That's a great question. I asked it this morning, actually. I don't know. We are doing it in phases. We did not want to hold everything and submit at one time. So far, we're doing that so much that actually even our first project, we ended up splitting out, because they were contesting the rock that we had to buy to be able to get trucks into the landfill. And so we don't argue with them about that five hundred thousand dollars, rather than go ahead and give us that two point six that they say is perfectly fine, and we'll give us that. So that project, even in itself, has been split out. However, it is with the CRC, which I don't even know what that seems for, some of their review groups at FEMA. So that means it's well on its way. They've already asked a couple of questions about it. And our consultant is handling that for us, so we meet with FEMA again Thursday and should have an update then. But they've been very pushing about us submitting projects. We think it's because they want it off their plate, FEMA's plate. Unfortunately, once FEMA times off on it, FEMA's not the one that actually wishes to check Gina, but it comes all the way back to the state, and the state looks at it again, and then they submit the check to us.
Is there any money that we are interested in that that come through the county?
No, we, we're our own applicant. We have not really done it that way before as far as storm damage. I think we did it separately for COVID. But for storm damage, this time, we felt like there was too much within each jurisdiction to try and do that as a co-applicant. The only thing that we will have to separate or split is the donated resources. That is sort of what that is almost a deductible. So we will receive back eighty-seven and a half percent of our, or should, if we have done everything correctly, which is still quite a lot of work. But if we do everything correctly, we'll receive eighty-seven and a half percent back. We're looking at fifteen and a half million dollars. Twelve and a half percent of that is still a good bit of money that we won't get back. However, our donated resources is almost what that is sort of paying off our deductible, because what it's showing is that the local government or local citizens mostly did a lot of stuff on their own, like donations, volunteer hours, those kinds of things. And so then they will take that off of our, what we owe, and and give us that back, too. Though I don't know what that total is yet, but we, us in the county are going to have to split that. We're saying that it'll be split. So I haven't seen that in writing yet. Fortunately, we have the same consultant that is that is submitting all of this for us, so I would expect that. And he and I talked about it. I don't want to put him in a bad position to have to argue with two different clients. But so far, the recommendation from the county has been fifty, fifty, and I'm kind of favorite. There's no way for us to know what citizen, what part, who got what part. I mean, I don't know.
Are there any other questions? So at this time, would you like to introduce your director?
I want to introduce y'all to our finance director. This is Deborah Manning Gilbert. Ended up as the region four?
Fourteen.
Fiscal operations made under, which is large region in fact, of Paulson County. So she moved over those offices, came to all of their their fiscal operations that they needed there, and then sorry, jumped right in. Thankfully, she's independent and a self-starter, because I have not been able to spend near as much time with her as I have wanted. But she sat through budget with Angel and I yesterday. She's been sitting with Amanda to learn sort of the accounting sides, and she really helped me, and we're very, very glad to have her. So.
And I'm very, very glad to be here.
And what you may not know, I feel that on tour, but this is Amanda Morris's mom. So Amanda, that used to come down here and help us with our meetings. Kind of good reference.
Wonderful. We're delighted to have you step in before the fourth meeting.
I look forward to it. A lot of challenges here, but I hope I'm up to it and make y'all all proud.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anything else before we go into executive session? All right. So considering executive session, OCGA Section fifty-fourteen, three B, one D, the purpose of authorizing negotiations, purchase, disposal of, or lease property. OCGA Section fifty-fourteen, two-one, the purpose of consulting meeting with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation settlement, administrative proceedings, or to other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the agency or any officer or employee, or in which the agency or any officer or employee may be directly involved in pursuit to OCGA Section fifty-fourteen, three B. For the purpose of discussing or delivering upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee. We have a motion to go into executive session. Mr. Tinsley with motion. We have a second. Second round is for Brian. All in favor, please join us in the readers. And thank you, Steph, for all you do. And thank you staff for all you do. I'm going to put your mic.
Thank you for following.